I want to just remind everyone that the time and place of the meeting has been placed on our building and been given to the local media and also has been posted on the city webpage and on the public meetings webpage. We'll go ahead and get started, we'll do a roll call. Councilman Labor, here. Councilman White, here. Councilman Barrett, here. Councilman Wade, here. And Councilman Burdick, here. Everybody made it. We'll have our opening ceremony. We've asked Councilman Wade to give us a prayer and then after following the prayer he'll stand and follow me in the pledge of allegiance.
Our holy father, we're grateful for the opportunity we have together as a city council and a councilmate. Grateful for the free land we live in and for the country we have, for the freedoms we have. Grateful for this wonderful city we have to live in and for those who have done so much throughout the years to progress the problem. Grateful for the blessings thou hast blessed our area with and continues to bless this way as our economy starts to expand and grow. We're also mindful this night of those who do so much to protect the city and its residents, our police department, our fighters and those who work in our city staff and administration. We ask for blessing upon them. We pray, Father, for those on the east coast who are struggling from the difficulties of the hurricanes. Will thou bless them with their needs? Will thou bless those on the Wasatch Front that are struggling with the challenges of fire? And thou will bless them and help them. Father, we ask that we may have an inspiration and guidance as we meet, we can do what is best for the city and our actions can be appropriate. We say this in the name of thy son, Jesus Christ. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Councilman White. Can I take a quick two minutes? Do you have any changes or amendments to page one? Page two? And page three? Seeing that, would you stay in motion to approve?
So.
Councilman Wade?
Second.
My Councilman Burdick, call it paper.
Aye.
Any opposed? We have a three minute, well, we have a period at the beginning of our meeting that any person can take three minutes, three minutes to address the council if anybody would like to take opportunity for that.
I would like to bring up one subject.
Absolutely. If you come forward, state your name and your address.
Eighty-one West Gate Drive. We've been continuing to have a sewer issue. It's been addressed multiple times. The city has come up and may have put filters in the sources. Where this works for a short period of time, it's not, it's not fixed. It continues to, obviously, we call in and the sewer smell gets such that at nights my kids end up having to sleep downstairs on the couch. That's, that's the extent of this. At one point, we, we had a gentleman come in and run a line down our sewer system. They thought it was maybe ours going up to the main line. This was done. Said there was no blockage, however, we went ahead and had our sewer system to the gym of a grand, removed, replaced. The sewer system continues putting off this odor. I've gone up and down the street on Gate Drive asking if others are, are having these problems and, and please feel free to do the same. It's, it's not just my house that's having these problems. So when my kids are having to go out of their bedrooms to go downstairs into the living room on the eight pole golf course, not that that should matter, but we moved up there to have a little bit nicer view and everything else like that, not expecting to have this issue. I ask that the council take a look at this further than, than what we have thus far and try to come up with a fix, a solid fix. Like I said, the filters are only lasting for a short period of time.
And just for your, it's Gate Drive, eighty-one?
Eighty-one West, Gate Drive.
Can I address that?
Yeah, definitely. So, yeah, I apologize for not following up on this, Derek. No, I got with Kirby, it was probably about a year ago. And he says they're, they're lying. This is the last that I knew. Been around and it was clear that you were waiting on the results of, you were lying to get around. And then I never heard anything back. So I just assumed it must have gotten fixed. So I dropped the ball on that.
No, and I believe that Kirby, obviously, this has been an ongoing issue for a little over two years. And in the process, I've obviously talked with Kirby directly and, you know, at one point he said, well, we're doing everything we can, we're, we're trying to get filters in and, and I won't lie, I think it's got a little heated there for, for a minute saying, guys, we gotta do something because it, it's nauseous at times to the point where you can't even enjoy to be outside. One thing I would like to point out, that it possibly may not be the sewer system. On the eight pole, if you guys want to drive up and take a look, there are two areas that are extremely saturated out on the golf course. And many of us in here can understand that when you start having things start to decay, it puts off a very strong odor. And there are areas that they won't allow the golf carts to go because obviously it's so spongy and decayed to the point to where I don't know if we have an actual spring coming up there. I don't know if there's most water line. I hope they found one on the golf course that, core back in the day, water lines were ran and so forth. So I think there might be one or two issues either out on the golf course or it's our sewer system. When they put subdivision in back behind my house, they obviously plugged into this line. But when this line was placed, it was with Gates Drive in mind, not with the subdivision where, say, Troy Roar and a lot of them live now. And so this hole was opened up. I bought the house from my parents. And a lot of, you know, obviously, in the line of business that I'm in, we notice certain things maybe the average person that's not in the construction line would notice, but the line itself actually bellies, it's got a big belly in it. And so that will actually cause that water backup right there, which can cause the smell. Seeing as what we have up there on the golf course. So there's, there's two different points that I believe that need to look at. I've done my due diligence, trying to figure out what it could be. I'm not privy to, when they ran their, I don't know what it is, they ran something down the line to see if there was a problem with the line and we're also paid for that. You guys should have those results. I'm not privy to that information. And so I ask that maybe you guys take a look at that and see what it was they found when they, when they ran that down the line. If they found the line to be in good shape, then I guess we're, we'll look at something up there on the golf course. And that's directly across from, from my house, there on the eight pole.
And it, it pretty much started when that subdivision behind you was probably.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. That's when a lot of that first started noticing the smell. And over, over time, it's, it's progressively gotten worse. And like I said, we have a, a small cooler on top, so obviously that's, that's pulling in all of that air and it's, it's pretty much more.
Well, we'll definitely follow up with that. And I would, yeah, we can get with them if they have the records of, you know, I don't know if they're on a camera down the line or what they did.
We would have a camera that we could run down the line and we've probably done that. I know that we have put in filters. We don't do that in current parts. We have put in filters on two or three occasions to replace those. Our understanding, my understanding was that the filters made a difference.
They did.
And that, and it just doesn't last forever. They're charcoal filters, they don't last forever. The other thing is, we understand that, that the whole sewer system between the changes of temperature, that change in temperature will, will affect a number of different areas. So it's worse in the spring and the fall, so it's worse in how than it would be during the winter or during the summer, etc. That is true in other areas. It's a general effect of up sewer systems is that, is that during that change in season between where it's, where the temperature drops, that, that air changes and it starts that. And that's just a natural throughout the system. So you can see that.
Let's do this, because use just to hear and not usually, it is designed just to hear your concern. And so any remedies or any things, anything that we would find to, to help you with that will, will do at another time, but we will look into that.
All right. Thank you.
Thanks. Thank you, Mr. Sturridge. Any others? Do we have anyone else that would like to take a few minutes? Okay. Now we'll move ahead to the resolution twenty-eighteen, two eighty-nine.
I speak on that one. At this point, you've already passed the resolution. There was a few changes that were brought up. When we went to close, there were a few things that were identified. If you pull up the exact numbers. But in the final resolution, the amount of the reserve account can't be more than ten percent of the amount of the loan. So at that point, the original amount had been eighteen thousand, seven hundred and twenty-five. They, they reduced that to sixteen thousand because of the, of the amount of the loan was one hundred and sixty thousand. So at that point, that is, that is the only real piece of change. It only means that we have to pull less in a account and set aside for, for particular last payment. So at that point, that's the only difference. So we'd ask that you reapprove what you already approved. We've closed on the loan, we've made deposits of money. So it wasn't substantive to hold back, but it is just a technical change that needs approved back by council.
Does anyone have any questions on that? Any further question? I move that we approve the resolution.
Second motion by Councilman White, second by Councilman Labor. Call it paper.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, resolution's passed us. The moment Hal has been waiting for. Eight Hundred South Gutter and Sidewalk Project, board.
Just as he's getting up, you've heard the Inter-South projects a number of times. We have awarded three other projects that are on Eight Hundred South. We've awarded the storm drain, we've awarded the water project, we've awarded the asphalt paving project. This is the actual Kerbin Gutter project. It comes before the asphalt, but in order of where things went, so at this point, this is actually a new project, is encompassing in this. This project has to be done prior to the asphalt. At least the asphalt guys really like it done that way, they have the credit issue. It's first, makes it easier that way. The question really comes is about numbers and price. And, and that's where we're going to get down and, and we've invited Troy, our, our engineer for this project, to talk through some of the things and the bids getting higher than we expected and either he has to do it with a wheelbarrow or he has to fill out what, what we do then, how to make it work.
That's what I was going to do last time.
We did it, we, we, we wanted to have him do it with a wheelbarrow, but he's not ready to do it for us.
Just to give an idea for those that are just new to this, the reason it was split up between several different projects is because there were several different funding sources to get this project done. So we had to split it up that way for the different funding sources and they all came together and, and made it a possibility.
Yep. They, they, they made it a possibility and just to give you this quick update, as far as the, the water portion, the sewer portion was, are finished. And so we're actually ready to go to work on this portion. But the Kerbin Gutter Sidewalk on the project was bid through a grant that we received from Utah, through the Joint Highway Committee. And with that, our engineer's estimate on the plans as they went out on this was two hundred and sixty-nine thousand dollars. I'm going to talk to you in round numbers with this because we don't have all the specifics because the bids came in over our engineer's estimate by more than ten percent. Excuse you, I had a cold, so if I get ours, I'll stop here, second, and then come back. We have two bidders, we know that much on this project. From what we've been told, the bids came in at four hundred and nine thousand and four hundred and sixteen thousand dollars. So the two bidders were fairly close to each other. But those numbers are about a hundred and forty thousand dollars above our engineer's estimate, which is about fifty percent, a little more than fifty, from where our estimate was. The estimate, I just want to give you this background as how we go through the process of one of these federal projects, is the project is designed, submitted to Utah, they review the project, they review the estimates, they go through and they concur in this with what our design is and what our estimate is, seeing that they're fulfilling the bill for it. And they also felt like when we advertised this, that our project was going to be around two hundred and sixty thousand dollars around. So we were all surprised. Our speculation on it is, is that the contractors have bid a premium because of it being paid in the fall with this on the year, with what's going on and with how busy people are. But as far as being able to fund this, with the CIB project, you just passed this resolution on, with that money, part of the items that are in this bid were also included in the funding package for CIB. And so if we look at those items, we have two hundred and eight thousand dollars worth of items that were included in the CIB package that were put into this project because we thought, well, what do we thought the bids would be? And so if the hundred and forty thousand dollars was approved to add that toward the projects as the bids came in, that difference would actually be funded out of the CIB project onto this. And so, and I apologize that I can't give you specific numbers, but I don't even know who the two bidders are. They won't release that to us. They haven't released to us the exact numbers even. They've just given us enough information that we can bring what we're bringing to you tonight.
Was this the DOT?
Yes, it was bid through DOT. And they are the ones that will award it, they're the ones that will have the contract. What would have to happen with this is that if the city determined to go ahead and authorize award of the project, then the city would have to put up this hundred and forty thousand dollars difference so that they could award the project, so it would be in an escrow account there. And then as the project was built and the contractor was paid, then those payments could be submitted to CIB for reimbursement back to the city on this project.
One other, one other question I have is, did we have any match funding with the DOT? Did we already put up?
It's already been posted, we had seven percent, which was about twenty-one thousand dollars on this project, was the city's portion for this Kerbin Gutter Sidewalk.
So totally, that's what would be a hundred and sixty some odd, but with, if we could get the reimbursement from the.
Yeah, CIB would reimburse it, Troy would be back down to twenty-one thousand.
We would outlay it and then get it back out of our.
Is that going to affect the overall?
So we're, we're underbid, we, the paving was under.
Was, was under.
So that's a, was it on a hundred?
It was not a hundred thousand dollars, but it was under the estimate that we had on yet.
So at that point, we're forty, fifty thousand more than what we expected, which would reduce out of our chipso portion of it. We take that out of the chipso side of our project, reduce it a little bit. It's not going to actually cost the city any more money because there's, we just won't be able to do as much of the chipso work that we would have thought. We will build, we would bid that out, you know, in the, in the winter, February, March, something like that, we'll bid it out. But once we know how much we have left to bid, that's when we use to go there. So it's not going to charge us more, it's just what we can get done.
Great, I have one other question and then I'll, if anybody else has any questions that, so are we still on track to try to get this done this year or is it?
That's a good question. So you want to talk on that one?
Let's, let's talk on that one. If we, if the city council decides to award this project tonight from a timing standpoint, the notice to notice award would go up to the contractor by Friday of this week. The contractor would then have ten days to execute that contract. And then as soon as he had that contract executed with Utah, they would give him a notice of proceed. So with those dates in mind, the contract could be delayed or wouldn't start until around the fifteenth of October with this project.
That's the way it's at, the latest.
That's, that's the latest that he could delay to here. This is another, I don't know the answer to. In the contract, the way that bids through Utah, the contractor's given a range of dates, thirty to sixty days that he can do this project and he tells us how long he's going to take. So if he delayed till October fifteenth and he bid thirty days, that would tell us that the contractor is anticipating being finished by the middle of November. If he bid the maximum number of days, that would show that he's planning on having the Kerbin Gutter Sidewalk finished around the fifteenth of December, which could be a problem with cold weather and not being able to actually complete. And so that's the timing issue. And as Ryan said, the way that these were bid, it was bid in anticipation that the Kerbin Gutter Sidewalk, at least the Kerbin Gutter would be placed before the actual street work started. And so if we're thinking that we aren't going to have Kerbin Gutter down until the first part of November, I can promise you we aren't going to get it paid this year, that it's going to be in the spring of next year to get concrete.
Will that change anything with the, with the, where we have already awarded the?
And that was another question.
That was another question Ryan asked me and I, and I checked on that, but.
We're going to talk for.
That's right. That's okay.
We got your little way. To get this information passed along. I, I talked to the contractor and he is, and the contractor on the page is Burtley Page, Burtley Materials, excuse me, let's get the name right, Burtley Materials with this. And I talked to them and they would not anticipate any change in cost associated with that to hold off from getting this fall to not beginning till spring on their part of the project. The one other concern I have that I expressed to Ryan, now we've talked about timing on this, is that this was bid on the twenty-eighth of September, or August, excuse me. And either to get the information, been able to gather and get to the city council, here we delay two weeks. By the time he gets a notice award on this, it'll be about three weeks after that bid. One other concern that I would like to just have the council be aware of is if he is anticipating this being in December, we could be looking at a contractor coming back saying, you delayed me. I've now got to do cold weather concrete. I either want to not do the project until spring or it's going to cost more money. So I'm, I'm just trying to give you all the pieces that, but we've thought about all the potential pitfalls that we have, yes.
Just a question, Troy, do we have any, would have been a challenge for us, just a whole lot of spring, rebid in spring?
No.
With the possibilities for doing that.
Yes. That, that is, that is another possibility is if the council decided tonight, you did not want to put in this extra hundred and forty thousand dollars and reject the bids, then what would happen with that is we would take the project back, we would re-sculp it, take some of the sidewalk out so that it could be moved from this project into the street project because it also has sidewalk. And modify the sculpt to where this project would rebid November, December, January as a spring project. What that, all that does to you in this case is if prices come back the same, the prices come back the same, if they come back less, which I would tend to think they may because of people right now, they're busy, if they bid it in December, January, they'll be looking for work to happen. All, what it would do to you is would leave the street in the condition it's in for the winter by doing that. That would be the biggest drawback that I can see.
That's a possibility anyway.
That, that's a possibility either way.
What's the difficulty is where it's DOT, going through the bidding process and we're so far from that, it's, that makes it.
It's a, it's a, it's a long process. The other, the other thing is, and let me ask you this, Troy, and we haven't talked about this one, but let's assume that we go back, because we have to scope it back down to the, into the numbers, close to there. If it comes in lower than the two hundred and eighty that's funded, what happens with the difference?
We don't let it scope that way. But that's the first answer to that one. If it did, if it did come in under the two hundred and eighty thousand dollars, then at that point, technically, we would get the difference back to, to Utah. Let's say committed two hundred and forty instead of two hundred and eighty. At that point, those dollars would go back to the Joint Highway Committee to be reallocated to some of the.
So the risk there, as I understand that, is if we, if we take back the numbers and we say, well, this is what the bids were, let's assume that's what our bids are going to be, we scope it down, so we have less in the project, we take some things out, we bid it, the bids come in lower, we lose the difference and we still have to pay for the, the things we take down.
I, I would say, my feeling is not to scope it back, but I agree, it doesn't really look like any option we get the road done this year. And John, go ahead.
Troy, please. When Brett and I talked to, can't remember his name, but you know, he said that changing the schedule to next spring would be enough of a scope change to rebid it.
Yes. And just, just on the loan would allow us to do it. But we got to have some sort of scope change, but just, just timing would be enough that we could put out the project exactly like it is.
And I, my own personal opinion is time is money. Any, anytime anyone's under a crunch or trying to get something done a little quicker is going to charge a premium. And so maybe we're just changing the date, rebidding and, and I wish we could get a bid more than.
We've seen winter projects right down our corner, and it was horrible. The outcome is not what you want and I think we'd be, that one year waiting for getting the right thing done would be well worth it, you know? That's my opinion.
I feel the same way.
I have the same feeling. I just think we ought to curtail the award and put it off a bit in spring. I think our exposure is zero basically.
Yeah, but from that standpoint, I'm going to say yes because on our end, it wouldn't cost you any difference in the engineering. We're just going to modify the plans, change the dates, do those modifications, so that there's not going to be a cost from that standpoint on the project. And, you know, that's, that's the thing where you were, we're betting on is that the number stays the same or comes down, then there's not any difference to the city. then there's not any difference to the city. The, the difference in this that will cause Ryan some grief, I'm gonna say this, is trying to figure out what to bid as far as the chip seal next year with it holding off. Because this needs to bid and it could be bid in January to start in April or May to give him that idea, but that would be the, probably the hardest thing is Ryan trying to figure out budget, not knowing exactly what this project is, is costing.
So that's the soonest they could bid is in January for, for next year, they wouldn't go out to bid?
It could, no, it could go out probably if we got the bids rejected and this, uh, it could probably advertise as early as the first part of November. What, what we do is we just have to go through UDOT's process and, and redoing this, if the only changes were days, the review process would be shortened. And so their advertisement period is six weeks, we've got two weeks of, of prep work to that and whatever changes. So we, we anticipate about seven weeks. So if we rejected the bids right now in this, we set the twentieth here, we're probably looking at the first part of November for bids for a, a spring start on this. And so it could, it could advertise as early as November.
From my end, the, the budget item isn't necessarily the issue, I'm gonna bid as if it doesn't, uh, if, if there's not the money there. And then if we make a change order to overrun or add a project, we'll do that through a change order into a calendar, so that's it.
Yeah, that's not that big a deal.
So it's not too big of a deal, it's a little bit, it'd be nice to know. The other thing is, is, and I told, as I told, talked to Troy, one thing that we all would want to make sure that it's the, it's the public information so that we all are on board with the same answer. So that when, when this road is rough all in and along, we know that we consciously made that decision. Uh, and that, that, that is one that if the public has issues or concerns or complaints, we know, all, everybody knows reasons why and we're all on the same page. That, that is one I'd like to make sure that is the case. And, um, whether we go one way or they go the other, it'd be nice to be able to have the curb and gutter in so that the street could start as soon as it could in the spring. If, if the curb and gutter is gonna go in the spring, that'll obviously push back. Um, so if we could start that in March, and they take sixty days for the middle of the summer before we're working on the street anyway. So it does move it out. If they could get in early, it finishes us and we could be, you know, one of the first ones to get done paving. Otherwise, we might be in the middle, it just depends. So it, it, it is a timing frame more than anything else, it's really that.
Do we make a motion on this or?
Yeah, yeah, either way you wanna go, it's like a motion, however you wanna go for it.
I'd make a motion if we don't accept the bids and we put it off for the spring and we don't try to rush the paving. I mean, we could live with six months or more of that instead of ten years of that project. I think the, the public would be happy if we made a good decision about that. So I don't know how the wording that we postpone or we don't accept, what do we need to say to make?
So we have a, a motion to reject the bids and, and postpone the project and rebid as soon as possible. Do we have any other motions or discussions?
Just like a speed to the motion, ask if you just make one or two that, then we would put it back up for bid in January. So we could get.
Or just.
Be more objective, yeah.
At the latest.
Put a work start in spring.
Yeah, the, the way that, the way that I would propose that we would do this is tell the contractor that he has to start on the, but we're gonna start charging him time the first of March or the first day of work. So that he knows what he's expecting on the first of March. But if we had a good spring and he could get in the latter part of February, he could start. But we'd start no later than March first or March fifteenth or, or a date in there that we were all good with.
Just on that one, Aaron, because we hit to UDOT setting a date, that was what we would plan for and shoot for, but they will control something. So, I, I just.
Yep.
Putting in a date, we, we understand that, they will, we'll, we'll work to that. But adding that, it really becomes UDOT's decision.
Second motion. Okay, so we have a motion in a second, uh, before we vote, how?
Got no problem postponing that. Do it right the first time. Only thing I ask is just slow the traffic down, we're targeting that.
Think we'll put a big ditch across the middle of the road.
It's, it's a bit rough right now.
Yep, they, they get hit in the hot spots in forty miles an hour.
We have a, we have a motion, in a second, do we have any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? They vote, it passes, so we'll.
Thank you, so we'll notify UDOT and, uh, if you will send Larry an email, I'll also touch base with you.
I will.
Thank you. We'll get this done.
Thanks, Troy.
Thank you.
Alright, the extra mile day resolution. We've got, that's coming up, the extra mile day comes up in beginning of.
November first, yes. So when I pulled up the resolutions here, um, so there's received a copy of that. And, uh, in years past, it's just simply been a resolution, um, to proclaim it as extra mile day. Last year, we did have, uh, a few that were selected to be recognized on that, uh, the nearest council even to that. So our question is, you know, whether you're proclaiming it or whether you wanna have, um, people recognizing what you want us to do with that, that way.
They would like us to make a few of those fall out of it if we possibly can.
Well, if we, if we're going to do that, I was, I was talking to Ryan today about it. And, uh, I think last year, we also just nominate, not just nominated a few individuals and put a bit to be recognized. One of my thoughts, and it'd be a little more poop lot-ish, but that would be to put it out on Facebook through the Roosevelt City website and take, um, nominations from people in the community, from peers, from other individuals in the community.
However much work you wanna put into it, they will.
And that would lead, that would kind of fall in your court and what you're doing.
We did that, when, when I was at the newspaper, we did that with our women in business, um, now that it's every year. So I'm familiar with that process with putting information out and asking people to nominate other people, um, whether via Facebook or Facebook, like do us and keep it sold on us and then maybe mention those people afterward. Um, the way that we did it there is that we would take nominations and then break them to a group like the council to, um, to select from those nominations. Yeah, so, so if that would work for you, I could take those in and then make sure that they can be made at the council for your final approval.
That's just an idea and a thought, but does anyone else have any thoughts or ideas on that?
I think anytime Larry, we can realize those that are going, yeah, the community is great. It's a great way to get people involved, taking outside themselves.
I like the idea of having not just us choose because after a while, people become suspicious that what is our motivation for choosing, but this way we can say, we let the Roosevelt City residents choose.
And it's, it's a good way for the residents to see how one another serves and helps and contributes. And, and then I think show appreciation for that.
So I got a question. Is this something we wanna limit to the citizens in Roosevelt or little Larry's around Roosevelt as well, or how, how do we want? Because I know, it seems like last year, I wonder if this award, if one of the people acknowledged was not a citizen of Roosevelt. And, you know, I'm, I'm okay with that, but I just wanna see if it, how the council.
I think if they serve on the committee or serve that, you know, you know, in Roosevelt, even though they may not be resident, I think that would be appropriate. But how, yeah, that's a question, how do we?
I think if they're serving the community of Roosevelt, then I think that's, that's where we, kind of the discussion was last time, as I recall, Kim Mills wasn't living in the city, but she was recognized. But, uh, I think their service to the city or to the community.
I would guess.
We'll do whatever you want and whatever guidelines you guys set, um, we'll, it's after the book.
Well, I guess we look and see how the nominations go and if we do have some that are outside the city, we look at their participation in the city and how, you know, how they benefited the city and, and we make our, I don't think we ought to be restricted by that, but I think that, um, that, that could be something we consider as we make this. And decide.
I think as a city, rewarding this award as a city, it ought to be benefits, you know, more things that they've done to go above and beyond in our city, love for our community here. Roosevelt, that's my thought. And I'm not in any way disputing the awards last year, I think she's a great contributor to our community. Didn't she live in Roosevelt most, most of that year or?
She served on the base in our council.
You sure know this, her, that's done quite a bit, definitely she works in the city. I don't even know that she was in Calhoun, so I don't know, she was the same for that.
She, yeah, she may have, she, anyway, it was a new home that they moved into. Great, any other discussion on that? I think it's a good thing, so.
Okay, we'll proceed with doing it on Facebook with the.
Can we motion?
I think so, can we get a motion for that?
So who?
Second then. Motion by Councilman White, second by Councilman Barrett, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So we'll try it this year on Facebook, see how it works, I think it's a good idea.
We might highlight it in our, um, our bulletin, if that's all right, to, to, to bigger reach to the district.
Absolutely. Alright, um, purchase orders have, maybe it's me, sorry. Okay, um, we'll give a little bit of time for Joe and, like, Councilman Barrett and Councilman White to look at those. While we look through those real quick, do we have any reports from the study committees? We'll start with Councilman Flabber.
I do not.
Councilman White. Councilman Barrett. Just a report for me really quickly, uh, the economic development committee, uh, the letters have been sent out. We do have several entities that responded back, uh, with applicants. And so it won't be too long until we start sorting through those and identifying who we would like to appoint. And we're anticipating that at the second meeting in October to make those appointments. Um, one thing Carolyn, uh, and this would probably pertain to lead to, is to advertise, we have four positions that we'd like to, uh, feel from the public, uh, just general public, uh, business owners and those types of people in the area. And so we'll have to get that out very soon and, and we'll have to get together and form some type of advertisement or something in the paper and.
So do her meetings would be the, like, way to notify.
Right.
So people put their own application in?
Sure, yes, so we would just give them, whether it's in the paper or online, we would give them the address, tell them what we're doing. Uh, and maybe I, we'd sit down and, and go through that kind of form, some type of advertisement or some type of letter informing the public what's happening. And if anyone's interested to go ahead and, and turn their applications in or their resumes in to, um, Carolyn, we can get that ball rolling so that by the end of October, we have everything back and we can make those, those public decisions. Other than that, I think that's all I have. We went to Washington DC with McIntyre, I remember.
Um, Richard McIntyre, yeah, Richard McIntyre, that was Mark.
And, uh, felt that out a little bit, I think there are some dollars there, but I think there's, it's, there's gonna be some work.
I mean, there's more to it. We did, we met with, uh, Senator Lee's office, Senator Hatcher's office, um, Congressman Bishop's office, uh, UDOT.
DEA.
DEA, so we met with a, a number of different ones, but we had a good trip.
So the next step with that, we're, we're waiting for the fruits of the labor. So we're waiting to, to have them put together some type of an application, grant application or something. That's all I have, um, Councilman White, you have any questions?
I think it has been covered already.
Nope.
Nothing.
Um, did everybody get a chance to look at the purchase orders? Any questions or?
I think I have one question. Just that I'm new and I don't know how it works, but this, uh, great half phase to guaranteed positive refund. So when somebody builds a subdivision, they give a deposit to guarantee that they're going to complete the subdivision?
Right, and then it says factors, so they'll, they'll put a deposit as a percentage of the project and we hold that until we have had a final inspection. So we've done a final inspection and said, alright, the road is, is maintained, so it's two years, so it's, as it's warranted, um, that they've installed it correctly as far as, um, water, uh, laterals, uh, different, different items, making sure that they're out secondary, uh, boxes so that the road can be developed. Then we have that, um, it would include, uh, with the new ordinance, this one was before our sidewalk ordinance, but it would say at that point, we would refund it once the, once the sidewalks were all in. And once all the work was done for that, we accept the road, then at that point, we give them back their deposit. So at this point, we're both accepting the road as now our road and we are, uh, issuing them back, um, the.
And does that include the sidewalks as well and the gutters or is that just the road?
At this point, it's, um, curb and gutter and, and road, um, sidewalks as they are to put in, but they're not allowed. Is this one didn't require it, because it was put in, if they started before that part.
The way I understand it, when construction happens, when whoever.